Okay, so it is four o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd look for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Who approved the agenda?
Motion by Dave, second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, strategic planning. Gary, you're up.
Thank you very much, guys. Good to see you again. We're on the last meeting for the committee, Strategic Planning Committee. On follow-up meeting next week, which will be just a school board, obviously an open meeting that other people can attend. And at that time, my goal is, assuming I'm not still sick, is to uh be in the car and be down there to meet with you guys. So we'll firm those things up later on tonight. But for now, let's uh jump into the PowerPoint. And we will uh start working our way through a few things. I'm hearing a little bit of an echo. Are you guys okay on your end? Is the sound okay?
Yeah.
Yep, alright. I can deal with it here. Uh, okay. So, we uh have started, you know, uh went to, been through two meetings, on our third one now. And tonight, uh same round rules, all those types of things as we've worked on in the past, and we're not gonna go through these. But we're gonna review some materials first, and then we are going to uh move into our actual work for tonight. So our goals for tonight is to review the foundational items that we've already went through, the core values, the beliefs, the mission, and the vision statements, uh based on uh the input that I got from the survey we sent out yesterday, it's sixteen responses. And so we use, use that as our basis. We're gonna review some other older data again, just as a quick uh reminder of some of the other work that we've done. And then we're gonna start looking at the draft goals and objectives that Erin and Jennifer, and I don't know if anybody else had any input into it, uh but well, and I believe that's all been handed out to you. Is that correct?
Yeah, everybody's got a copy.
Okay, sounds good. So we will take a look at that, we'll take a look at how you go about putting goals and objectives together, what they really mean, and then we'll break into small groups and let you use what Erin and Jennifer and the staff have put together and see if you come up with anything additional to add to it, or subtract, or modify. And at this, at the conclusion of tonight, we'll have completed a flexible strategic direction for the school district. And then we'll have an opportunity uh for the committee to maybe suggest some action plan considerations. But once again, as we review the work of a school board, it's not the school board's business, or the community's here for that matter, to be down in the weeds. We just want to gather some information and then this will go on to administration for them to put the actual action plan together to meet the objectives that you guys have laid out. Any questions on that? Okay, so let's get on with the review of a few items. We're gonna start with the core values. So, these are the top vote-getters of the core values. And at this point, I would like you guys to kind of look at these and see if there's a do you wanna use all of them, or do you wanna use just five, or four, or whatever the number is of these that we hold as core values for the Leroy Ostrander Public Schools. So I'm looking for discussion here, and uh just go ahead and we can start talking about it.
Can you pop it back up on the screen? It came, there we go. That's, is that in response to what we just sent in today, or?
Last night, yep.
Yeah, okay.
So the top one was integrity, then honesty, and then we have four of them that were tied. Community, education, small class size, and responsibility in education. Responsibility.
Could honesty and transparency just go together?
Certainly could. Just looking for a discussion from you guys right now.
So small class size, I wasn't here last, last week, obviously, so small class size was, I mean, we want small classes, is that what everybody's thinking? I mean...
Yeah, that's, that was a four value from
Oh, it's a benefit.
Two meetings ago.
Okay, so it's a benefit, okay.
I don't think it's something we have to work on, though.
Right.
I mean, it exists.
Yeah, it's there.
Ideally, we probably would like to see the class size rolled by ten students per, right?
Yeah. So we have to have two teachers per grade.
Small class sizes.
Correct. I would say let's get rid of small class sizes.
I mean, it's not a goal, it's something that exists.
But I think it's, it's a goal, like if you have enough kids to divide them into two versus have one. Like the kindergarten class. Fifty kids divided, you know, like our kids are thirty-two for a long time.
Student-teacher ratio instead of small class sizes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and really, these aren't goals, though, you guys. You gotta remember, we're not talking about goals, we're talking about what your values are.
Okay. I, to me, small class sizes is kind of, like you said, it's kind of, you know, we wanna keep it that way, but everything else on there, to me, is a value more than anything, so I like them all, just taking out the small class size. Because you can combine transparency and honesty together. Shrink it down even.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Alright. Uh, if we go, I'm just taking notes here to make sure uh I got this, so we can have it all in the final document next week. Okay, on to the next. Talked about core values, now let's talk about uh this was something else. Uh, this is just some more information that supported this from other, when we did values early on in the surveys, this is just some more information, so I'm just gonna move away from it. You know, I screwed up. I got ahead of myself. This is the vote from last night.
Yeah.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm really sorry, guys. I think it's the cold medication that's kicking in. So, let's take a look at that now, then, and this makes a lot more sense. So how many of the nine are you interested in uh having? And if we wanna go with combining honesty and transparency, we could do that.
Yeah, they go together.
And generally, we're looking for about six core values, is what we're looking for. And a couple of those that I actually merged uh before I sent it out to you guys, when we originally had the discussion on core values, I merged accountability and responsibility into one. And I also merged safety and security into one.
Right. I mean, I think the consensus around the room would be to keep education, right?
Yep.
Education, student achievement.
Student achievement.
Accountability, responsibility.
If you're looking for six, and you put transparency with honesty, then you could take the top six, and then...
But should we have community in there too, saying, oh, you know, we're so small, we need that community?
I mean, could honesty, integrity, and transparency all go together?
Yep.
Yes.
Good one, Kate.
Yep.
Can we just drop off diversity?
Yep.
Thoughts?
I guess diversity to me is just, that's a given, you're always gonna have different social groups.
Part of all of it.
Yeah.
And diversity in the education and the academic achievement, and it's part of everything.
Yeah. Diversity just comes with democracy.
Integrity. What was it gonna be? Integrity, honesty, and transparency?
Transparency would all go together.
Yep. Okay, sounds like we got a consensus.
Yep.
Alright, let's move on then. Any other questions at all? Uh, this feedback is screwing me up. I think someone else is talking, it's just my voice coming back into my ears, that's, so, sorry. Okay, let's go on. So, belief statements were the next things. So a belief statement states the values of the group who, that the group holds for the school district. Uh, communicates who the district stands for, these are all things we've talked about already, just uh, just reviewing. Reflects all student learners from birth to end of life, establishes the moral and ethical priorities, should be sincere and uncompromising positions. And we usually wanna get to about four to eight belief statements, and they're really built off of those core values. So now, just as a reminder, well, one other thing I wanna bring up here, that we will use these belief statements in making decisions, difficult decisions. So when you guys, as a board especially, or as administrators, get confronted with a tough decision, that's one thing you can look back to. What are our beliefs, so that we can use that as our basis for making your decision, okay? It, it reflects the values, it grabs the attention, and henceforth. So let's take a look at some. Uh, these were the, uh, we have a number of them here now, you guys, so we have a number of them. But you'll see, I got three slides to go over. It, it just got to be that the second one was so big, that I needed to put that on a slide of it by itself. So the top vote getter was, we believe in collabora- collaboration between students, staff, families, and communities to achieve student success, okay? That's your top vote getter. We, you know, here we got, your honesty and integrity and trust are critical for building community. Another one of your top vote, you know, it just goes hand in hand with your values. Now, the next one was where one of your, one of the groups was being really creative, and came up with Cardinals, and then put a whole list of beliefs under Cardinals, okay? And, you know, that was, that's pretty creative, that's very creative. And, but they're addressing a belief in curriculum, in accountability, responsibility, diversity, involvement, nurturing, achievement, safety, and security. Many of those things we saw in the core values, but it isn't necessarily one for one. Alright, and so, and this is one of those deals where you can't really pick and choose if you wanna use that Cardinals, you know, overlying, it's, you know, yeah, you could pull some of these out as a belief statement, as a separate belief statement, if you want. Or you could just adopt the whole Cardinals thing as one. Alright, and then lastly, we have, we believe in excellent education for all students, and we believe in embracing diverse perspectives throughout the school district. Those are your top ones, there was other ones below that, uh but those were the top ones. So, at this point, uh, I, I'm gonna suggest that you kinda decide, do you want to just grab that Cardinals one? Or do you want to pick and choose and slice it up a little bit? So I'm gonna go back to that one, and you can look at it if you want.
What is the L in Cardinals?
The L is combined with achievement, it didn't get on the next slide.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, that didn't get, get bolded, I'm sorry. You know, things, uh, some of the things that we are missing from our core values would be would be the honesty, integrity, transparency portion of it. I'm just gonna go back, quickly back to our, though I have, uh, let's see, what else do I have? We had edu- education is in there, student achievement is in there, safety and security is in there. What we're missing, potentially, would be either accountability and responsibility, we have to take a look at that, I, cause I don't remember. And then the honesty, integrity, and transparency. And I assume we had community in there, so let's go back. We have accountability, so that's there, responsibility is there. Do we have community in here anyplace?
What's that, Kate?
You can switch the involvement to integrity and just flip the number to, we believe honesty, integrity, and trust. Flip it around, we believe integrity, honesty, and trust.
Yeah.
And replace the I.
I just need you guys to have a discussion on this. I'm just gonna...
In the responsibility one, it says, education is a community responsibility, so that gets our community in there.
And it kind of involves the number one vote, school personnel, students, parents, guardians, and the community work in partnership. It's very similar to that number one that got voted on the first, on the previous slide.
Right, yeah.
You know, collaboration between students, staff, families, and communities. So, it kinda says the same thing.
Yeah. Collaboration between students, staff, families, and communities.
And you could take, and, you know, you're gonna have to just use the word integrity too, you could put integrity and say honesty together. But start it with the I, and that would hit both of those, yep.
And we could, you know, we can make some changes, we can use some of these first two, and make some changes to that Cardinal one.
Uh-huh.
So. So, let's look, let's go through, let's go through some of these as they stand. And just uh, and see if you're okay with what they, what, how it's, how they're listed. So curriculum, you know, this goes to your education. So curriculum is both challenging and flexible, students have worth and are challenged by a curriculum that is dynamic, respond, and responsive to the changing needs of society. Does that encapsulate what we want for education?
I mean, I like, I like that in a lot of our different conversations over the last times, we've talked about, you know, the changing needs of society, and we want our kids to be ready to go into variety. So I like the way it says, responsive to the changing needs, cause I think that's what you mentioned. We don't even know um what we're, what the jobs are gonna be, you know, so I like that part.
To me, curriculum is a piece of a well-rounded education.
Right, so...
You've got your extracurriculars, your FA, your music, all those kinds of things. As well, just, just saying.
Instead of dynamic, do you wanna say diverse?
I think I like diverse. Yeah, switch dynamic to diverse.
That kind of encompasses what you're saying, yeah.
But you're saying more, the word education is more than just the curriculum, for sure.
That's what I, that's my belief anyway.
So when we get down farther, if we have the highlighted the L for learning, where it says learning, what if we put, education is our highest priority? Like, you can use the word learning, and then you could put education there, or we could figure out how to put it in as the fir- as part of the first one.
I mean, I'm okay with curriculum, I'm just saying
It's only part.
It's just a piece of what we're, what we're on.
Yeah, like having a state curriculum requirement, that's a minimum. Nothing saying you can't go over and above and do better.
Right. Correct. Curriculum that is both challenging and flexible.
I can't change, this particular slide, I can't change it on the fly, so I'm just uh taking notes on another. Okay, so let's look at accountability, so some of the idea, go ahead, was there an idea there?
I was just gonna say, ju- just a thought. Okay, curriculum is both challenging and flexible. Students have worth and are challenged by an educational wa- an educational environment that is da-da-da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Cause then you're not using curriculum twice.
Yep.
Yeah.
And now we include, like, you know, the extra, you know, the extra classes you can take.
Education, so, you want me to say that again?
No, I got it.
Oh, you're good.
We're just gonna uh, challenged by an educational, I'm sorry, I guess I don't have it.
Environment, an educational environment, that is, what was the word you were gonna say?
Diverse.
Diverse.
And I got that one already.
And responsive, okay.
Uh, so, the educate, there was something that we didn't like about the word environment last time. What the heck was that?
There was too many E's in that, in that.
Okay.
We're kind of going on and on, there's too much rambling.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, alright. We might come back to this.
Okay.
Alright. Pull out second curriculum, insert educational environment. Okay, I got that. Accountability, what do we think about that one? School board and administration make decisions in the best interest of the students and are accountable for the overall success of the school district and its students.
Sounds okay to me.
Yeah. Do you have anything that might change? I think we're good on that one.
Good, I am too. Responsibility, education is a community responsibility, school personnel, students, parents, guardians, and the community work in partnership and demonstrate an active commitment to the education and development of our students.
Anybody have any changes? I'm seeing thumbs up and shaking heads of yes.
Yep.
Okay. Next on diversity, that was pretty brief, and diversity is a strength and shall be embraced, recognized, and celebrated.
Seeing a lot of yes heads.
That's good. Involvement, active, no, we're gonna change this to integrity, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the integrity and honesty part.
Okay, tell me what you wanna say here.
There was one somewhere that said something about that, was it number two? Number two.
Yeah, we believe honesty, integrity, and trust are critical for building community.
Except flip integrity.
Put integrity first, we believe integrity, honesty...
So how about, you know, on the other, on the other, on the core values, just one thing that doesn't match is we got transparency there. We have trust here. I really like the word trust, alright? Trust is really a good foundational word. And it's possible that we could, instead of transparency on that, under core values, transplant trust in there instead.
Yeah.
Boy, taking so many notes, I hope I don't screw this up. Okay. Use us. Okay. Let's go to nurture. Nurture each student's education and well-being within a supportive learning community. Anything you wanna change on that?
See a lot of heads shaking yes, we're good.
Okay. Achievement, student achievement is fostered by effective classroom instruction and the professional development of highly qualified staff.
Yeah, we got a lot of yes heads.
The only thing that I would, the only thing that I'm just gonna throw out there is, and maybe it's addressed in one of the other ones, is generally, we talk about student achievement for all. And is there, is there any of that part of the component that we wanna put into it?
I think that's a good idea, somehow.
Just student achievement for all is fostered?
Good. Okay, got that. And learning, what do we wanna do for learning? Learning is the highest priority, education is a lifelong process. Any reemphasis on the word education here that you want?
I was thinking about some sort of emphasis on uh success in life after I don't know how you'd put that in there, but... Maybe, maybe it already kinda says that.
Can you do, like, learning and education are the highest priority, ensure, or not ensuring, we don't wanna use that word, but um...
She said, learning and education is the highest priority.
Well, use ensuring, but I don't wanna use that, that word.
Okay.
You can't guarantee anything, right? Ensuring um lifelong...
Maybe my comment is already kind of implied in the, in the statement. And ultimately, we wanna turn out uh productive citizens that are successful in life.
I like the idea of adding the word education, and then learning and education is the highest priority, but it's how do you get, how do you tie in the rest of it?
So you could, you could do something like, learning is the highest priority. Instead of education is lifelong process, but education for life, like um education for, I feel like we have that in one of our goals or something, education for life, or?
No, our group discussed that, I don't know if it ended up being...
Yeah. Education for...
Kate's the creative one, she's gotta come up with ideas.
Let me, let me, I've been doodling here a little bit, let me throw out a possibility. Uh, learning and education as a whole is, no, are, is... The fundamental and lifelong process that ensures success in life. And this is our priority, this is our highest priority. Now, I, I don't like, now, as I'm saying it, I don't like it, but...
You're getting close.
But some of the things, some of the things I do, so...
Learning, education, and preparation for life is our highest priority?
How about, "Learning and education is our highest priority as it is fundam- fundamental for success in our students' lives," or something to that effect. Let me put up a different screen here, I'm gonna stop sharing this and we're gonna...
One of our, um, one of our core values that we have is student achievement. If you want, learning...
So, I'm gonna try, try this again. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Can we change "and" to "as it is fundamental?" Before, yeah, let me see.
Just throwing in another option.
Yes.
Okay.
A student's ability to learn and be successful is our highest priority. Education is a lifelong process.
Can you say that again, a little bit louder?
A student's ability to learn and be successful is our highest priority. And then, "Education is a lifelong process."
Sounds good, too.
It's the opposite, though.
I like that.
Learning is a lifelong process, education's just one way of doing it.
A student's ability to learn, you're gonna have to, cause I'm slow, I'm sorry.
You'd have to say it though, that a student's education is the...
Well, their ability to learn, though, is what they'll take in life.
Teaching them those skills of how to study and how to change and take in new information.
So, a student's ability to learn and be successful is our highest priority. Right?
Yeah, because everybody's ability is different.
Yeah. Cause education comes in many forms, you have to have the ability to learn, the education provided.
Right.
Yeah. And then she had, which I hate the very end, was education.
Just that, "Education is a lifelong process," that last sentence there to be tagged on at the end. Just kind of altering the first one.
I like that one.
You want, "Education" or "education," and "learning is a lifelong process."
I would combine the education and get rid of the second sentence.
Cause you do get educated every day and you learn every day.
Would you do, "As education is a lifelong process?"
How about, "Each student's..." Doesn't have to be.
Our student's ability to learn and be successful is our highest priority.
So, I, I'm a little, I'm, I'm kind of pushing that ability to learn, cause each student is different. And I heard you guys talking about it a little bit, but I'm struggling with that a little bit. In that, can we actually... Change their physical abilities, tell me about what your conversation is on that.
Well, kind of what we just said was, you know, you teach the kids, you know, skills on how to learn, like, how do you study for things? You know, show, you know, that's kind of where I'm thinking, that, you know, you teach kids how to become lifelong learners. But, you know, maybe, my way of learning is I can read books, and Dave's is, he's more of a, you know, a hands-on type.
Right.
You know, how do then, you know, how do I then become, you know, become better at the hands-on? And how do you help Dave become more better with, like, the reading part of it, or, you know, on book page?
Yeah, so, it's not so much, we're not talking about their ability to learn. We're more concerned about, from a belief statement, is that we understand each child has a different need, and our programming, our, what we're doing in the classroom is going to address that. Correct?
Yeah. Can I throw out another one?
Yep.
You know, that I have synonymed that's closer to the original. Learning and education are our highest priority, preparing students with skills to be successful in life. So, I don't think we wanna guarantee that they're gonna have life success, but we can give them the skills to hopefully be successful, that's up to them to use and learn, yes.
I like that one.
Oh, good lord, can I type? "High priority," okay, now, tell me what you had after that.
He's typing it. Oh, sorry. Preparing students with skills to be successful in life.
Yep, I like that.
Do I got it?
Yep, I like that.
What are we thinking for using the one Miranda just had? I see a whole lot of yes heads, so I think we're gonna go with that one.
Okay, delete. Delete, there we go, alright, now, I'm gonna go back. Ah, okay. I got way too many screens going on here. Okay, back to this one now, so now, we've done learning, and the last one is safety and security. The school district provides a safe, secure, and positive learning environment in which emotional, physical, and social well-being abounds, where both students and staff feel appreciated and respected. Hang on, you guys got some good writers there.
Well, and her little girl. Erin.
He finally confessed, it's okay.
What do you guys think, do we got bobbleheads on this one, too?
Yeah.
I got a whole lot of yes heads.
Alright, that's good. Alright, we've just nailed the belief statements, way to go, guys. Now, next on the agenda. Done that, okay, mission statements. Just a quick review, it defines the present state or purpose of the school district. You know, what result for whom, something that all stakeholders should be able to articulate upon request. Clear and easy, da-da-da-da, and that would be, so, the results of... The, where you just voted for one, came out like this. Number one is the one that we agreed to last time. And then, we had people talking about voting for number two and number three also. So, we need discussion on this. For those that voted for number two or number three, what is it that you like about that one more than number one?
I voted for one.
I think two and three just elaborate more on what one says, right? I mean, one says everything that two and three does. I like one.
Was there, I'm trying to remember from last week, the one that starts with maximize, we were concerned with that word, that's what we got the emphasis, like, yeah, number one. Just to, like, if you weren't here last week to provide some discussion on, like, how that first one got developed.
And the third one is... Yeah, we shrunk everything, tried to get everything down into one. So, is there anybody that would like to use two or three, or is everyone thinking one?
I voted for two, actually. Just because I just felt like it was, uh, more of a bold statement that kind of rolled off the tongue pretty well, I guess, but... But I could be, I could be convinced to go.
Gary, you should take a straw poll vote in the room real quick?
Yes.
Alright, how many want number one, raise your hand? Sorry. Dave's giving a finger, we're in the majority, pretty much everyone here voted number one. Number one finger with a thumb.
Alright, 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 very good.
Dylan, take that off the recording.
Alright. Alright, so, we're going with number one. Good, that's settled, providing students, so, Dylan, or whoever's in charge of, uh, any of your graphics and your, your, uh, stationary and things like that, this baby's gotta start getting up on the, uh, on your website. Let's go to vision. Hey, vision provides guidance and inspiration as to what the school district is focused on, where you wanna go, it's about becoming, and it's inspirational, what's possible, and trying to attract people. What is your vision of the school district? Here, we had a dead tie. So, uh, I believe the second one is the one that we agreed to last week.
I guess I like number two, cause I think number one is more obvious, why wouldn't we provide a safe and welcoming environment?
That's a nice belief statement. Unless Erin's... Gary, do you want me to take a straw poll, the room, and see where we're at, start with?
Sure.
Alright, how many want number one? Okay, I have no hands, how many would like number two?
Two it is.
Two it is.
Very good. Alright, now, we're gonna get on with our real work for the night, guys. We're gonna start talking about goals and objectives. Uh, so, we're gonna review a few things first. So, goals are what the school district wishes us to accomplish. Now, we're gonna start getting into the details. And, uh, steps that the school district are, is gonna take, those would be the objectives. It doesn't say how they're gonna take those steps, but that's what you wanna get to. The, and, just so you know, those would be the action items that follow. And the action items need to be specifically done by administration and staff, because those are the people that know the detail of how to do this stuff, and then, they have to be on board with getting it done. So, goals fall from the top, they are based off of your beliefs, mission, and vision, and they describe the endpoint, your hoped-for outcome, broad, long-range topics, or targets, I should say. And there, you're gonna use all this information that we've already decided on. We're gonna look at the needs, the various things that you guys have talked about. We don't want fifty of them, because they're not gonna get done. There's just not enough time in the day to get fifty of them done. So, we just wanna address the most high-priority ones. We also want broad participation, we just don't want all this falling on Erin's shoulders to get the work done. This is spread across the whole staff, including the school board and some of it. And it's gotta be, like I said, tied into some of the other things that we've already talked about. Objectives are directly support the goal and compel action. They're specific, they quantify, they measure. And they're simple to understand, just a few words, and these are what they're gonna do in order to, in general terms, enable the goal. And under that goal will be the actual action step, action points. So, if we wanna look back at what we've talked about in the past year, the strengths from our surveys talked about your policies, procedures, and all those things in a good place, that school district and staff understand their roles and responsibilities, and that you're fair for all students. Externally, there, your community members said that they were satisfied with the condition of the school district's fields and facilities, and that's all they said as far as strengths, as far as the high-number ones. We had all these comments we talked about, we talked about the administration, the teaching staff, communications, you know, uh, but mainly when we were pulling in strengths from our surveys, a lot of it had to do with staff and the, and the knowledge that they have. a lot of it had to do with staff, and the, and the knowledge that they have. Get to some big ideas. Once again, we talk, and from that strengths, from that engagement, these are some of the things that were brought forward. You know, teachers, staff, performance center, student services center, these are all things that came through on, on all our our efforts to reach out to the public and to the stakeholders. Some additional ones were these, some of your partnerships. We'll leave you all stranded forever and financially stay everyone solid. So those are our strengths. Now, as we talked about earlier, our list of opportunities was quite large. This is gonna be what really kind of drives some of your goals and objectives. Is educating all students, roles and responsibility for everyone as to what their job is. School district uses, needs to use data more, need visibility. And a little bit of all facilities here again. And talks about planning a little bit also. And involved with all stakeholders. That was internally. Externally, the bit, you know, it was a little bit larger. They wanted, they talked about staff here, that we need some improvements. They also talked about level of communication a couple times, that that needs to be improved on. And that everybody in the community feels welcome and has a sense of belonging. And then as we get farther down the list, with the most, the more critical ones, they started talking about some of the programming that you want, and providing a better education. We also talked, look at the very last one, it says the school board administration make decisions in the best interest of the school district. Children, as far as the children. And we may disagree with that one, for those people sitting around the tables there, but that is something that came out in the external survey, so we need to address it. Some other opportunities that we, from the listening sessions, more technology, facility, curriculum. We've talked about curriculum a number of times, we got that built into our belief statements now. Better relationships, how many times have we heard this? You know, as far as roles and responsibilities, that we're all on the same page. And we have some staffing issues. We also talked about additional programming, whether it be STEAM or CTE, more staff development, communication again. And then, positive high school readiness, so that's going back to programming. And then also something that we've talked about a number of times is positive enrollment growth and in marketing. The funding from the state isn't a whole lot we can do about. Things that you are proud of, so we've talked about strengths, talked about opportunities. Again, here are a lot of the same things that we're proud of, and I'm not gonna go through all these. Possibilities. Here are some of the things that we might want to start taking action on. Increasing enrollment, you know, the marketing, technology, changes to the curriculum, the culture, which has to do with communications and knowing roles. There are some more detailed ones there. Must haves, again, the curriculum. Involvement, community connections, enrollment, facilities, all the things that we've been talking about. Alright. So, last time we talked about these possible focus areas. We talked about five of them that I put together quickly. Student achievement, student support, community, communications, outreach, marketing. I don't necessarily like that one, because it's got four big words in it. We might wanna pare that down. And we also had leadership and facilities. There was some suggestion last time that we could maybe take student achievement and student support and put them together. That was something that was talked about. And before we get to goals and objectives, we want to have these focus areas all agreed upon. So when we looked at what you guys had feedback on from that last link that I had everyone look at last night, these are some of the things that came up. You know, talked about student achievement. They talked about the data and curriculum and those various things. Student support was there. But it was only one item. And so once again, the possibility of merging one and two together. Community, communications, outreach, marketing. Talked about the different types of communication and reaching out to community members and other parties. Leadership. One comment was that they thought that leadership is currently working towards many of the focuses already. But things that were brought up is that leadership should be engaging the community more, developing strategies to inform the community, which goes back to communications. And follow-up is extremely important. Whoops, went too far. And then, we had facilities on there again. That was part of mine, but then we also had these two that showed up. Focusing on birth to four-year-olds, which to me goes back into that marketing area, but if you want to sub this in for a different focus area. And then we had Cardinals, showed his, show, raised his head again. So... There, this is what we got for focus areas. And so, we need to whittle this down so that we can have some nice buckets to put our, set our goals and our objectives and our action plan in. Seven is way too big. It's way too many. So now, I want you guys to have a discussion on that.
Well, I think we can take out Cardinals, because we hit that in the belief statement part. And a lot of it would fall under other areas.
Student achievement and student support could go together, as you suggested.
So now we're down to five.
Is there everything in Cardinals, is everything that's in Cardinals show up in these other ones?
Um, the curriculum, the accountability, responsibility, diversity. There's your...
Yeah, I think so.
I think they do.
The only thing under facilities, we might want to put something about secure, safety, or s- I don't know. That's not just on their facilities, but I don't know if safety and security are in the other.
They're not.
Yeah, okay.
But we, we certainly could throw that under facilities.
Okay.
Well, the part of safety and security that talks about emotional, physical, and social well-being can fall under the student support, student achievement.
Yes, absolutely.
I actually like it better under student support, yeah. Yeah.
Student achievement and support could be the one, one group.
Or do we want to keep student support and go for the mental health, safety, security?
Well, safety and security is also part of the facilities and building in there as well.
Okay, alright.
Is that, as far as the focusing on birth and four-year-olds, would that go, roll in under the marketing portion of it?
I think so.
I think so. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so that's what I'll do. I have notes on this, I'm gonna merge. So we're gonna, are we gonna leave student support as separate, or are we gonna merge it?
Merge.
I would say merge with achievement, because there's a lot of support that could go help the kids, you know, the achievement, it kind of go hand in hand.
Okay.
But we're gonna use some of the information from safe and secure as part of student support.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Just taking notes here, hang on a sec. So do you want, and that third one now, where we have community, communications, outreach, and marketing, do you want to use all four words there, are you good with that, or do you want to narrow it down a little bit?
I don't know what that first word under community is. Bidirectional, is that what it says?
I don't, yeah, it's bidirectional communication.
So the communication gets sent out by the school, and we want the public to give us some feedback or communication back.
Oh.
I think that's what that one was, I don't...
Yep. That's what I think it was, too.
Okay.
Can you just narrow it down?
And I can rework that.
I mean, that kind of encompasses communication and marketing.
Community outreach?
Yeah. Community and outreach.
Community outreach, marketing, no?
Because I mean, I would think some of the sub items could incorporate communication and marketing.
I didn't hear all that, but just, you tell me what you guys want to do there.
Well, isn't marketing part of communicating anyway? We were wondering if we couldn't combine, you know, do it as like, community outreach and communication, like drop the marketing part, which the, I mean, the four-year-old would fall under.
Still under that.
Yeah.
So drop marketing and say, community, communications, and outreach.
No, community outreach and marketing.
No.
Community.
Did I get that backwards?
Community outreach and communication.
Community outreach and communication.
Yep, okay.
So do we need to, do we need to do anything with the words underneath that, or?
I'll be, I'll be tweaking, I'll do that.
Alright, thank you.
I gotta keep muting here in between coughs. Alright. So we got the focus areas dealt with. So the four focus areas that we're gonna have are student achievement and support, and you guys should be writing these down. Okay, so student achievement and student support. Then we're gonna have community outreach and marketing. No, like communications, right?
Yeah, communication.
Screwed that up. Communications. Grab leadership as the third one. And we're gonna have facilities as the fourth one. Okay? Now, given that...
I didn't get that.
Now there's, I'm gonna skip this. Equitable education. Those are just some other things.
Gary, hold on.
Yep.
We got a couple that are behind, so number one is student achievement and support.
Okay.
Number two, community outreach and communication. Number three is leadership.
Oh, leadership.
Number four is facilities.
Yep.
Alright, alright, I think we're caught up now.
Alright.
Thank you.
So those are the four focus areas that we want to create goals and objectives under, alright? So let me just roll through here. So, as we've talked about already, goals are broad in scope, objectives are more narrow. They relate directly to the mission statement, goals do, and objectives relate directly to the goal. A goal might be more longer in time, but an objective may be shorter in time. So, we're gonna use all this information that we just went through, and you're gonna start working on these. But I, what I would suggest, in your small groups now, is that, well, we're gonna take a break here first. Uh, is that you start with the ones from administration that they provided, and you're going to start crafting some additional ones. Or building on them, or use them just as they are. And so a goal statement will begin with the phrase, "We will..." And here are some examples, examples under student achievement. "We will maximize academic achievement in whatever." "We will establish a teaching and learning framework that includes 21st century skills." "We will increase the academic achievement of all students." "We will achieve the goals of the world's best workforce." Objectives now are going to support that goal. And they, possibilities, uh, let me just talk a little more about objectives. And SMART goals. How many of you have heard many times and taken training on SMART goals and objectives? Yeah, a number of them. Well, they show we had, oh, what we've done is there's new what comes SMARTY, which means they've added inclusive and equitable to the end of it. And so you got strategic, simple, and specific is what your objective should be. They gotta be measurable, they gotta be attainable and achievable, they gotta be relevant and realistic. You gotta have a time period, they gotta be time-bound, so that this isn't open-ended. And then you're looking at making sure it applies to everybody. That's what inclusive and equitable have to do with this, is that they have to support and apply to all students. Doesn't matter who they are. And this is some more information on it, but I'm not gonna go through all that.
I have a question.
Yeah, we got a question.
Yep.
I have a question, okay.
Yep.
When we get to this part, so we, we, we as a group are gonna be working on our goals, and then the objectives, okay? But I felt like earlier you said that the administration and staff need to write those objectives, because they know, am I wrong?
Yeah, I, yeah, I may have said that, I may have said that. Now you may have, you know, I may have said that. And what we do there is we have them come up with some to begin with, to give you some examples.
Good.
But the bottom line is, is that what they really need to do afterwards is the action steps
Okay.
that they're actually gonna do to, to get to that objective, which fulfills that goal. See the different levels?
I do, but like, sometimes we're not gonna know, for example, if something is attainable. So like, we would say, we want to see growth, okay? And then, under the one ex, one part attainable, we don't know what would be attainable. So we have to leave that to them to say, okay, five percent would be attainable, or what would, you know, like, we can't really define those things.
Yeah, 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 when it gets, but you have a goal
Okay.
of, you know, you know, it's something as simple as things from the world's best workforce, is that all students will meet those standards. Will be able to read at a third grade level when they're in third grade.
Right.
Alright, so you're gonna have goals, and then some objectives that you're going to set beneath those goals. And, and then it's up to them to come up with how they're going to attain those, and how we're going to measure those things. Is that, did that answer your question?
Yep, I think so, thank you.
Okay. So here are some verbs that you can, you know, skip through that, something you can read. Here's some examples. So the goal was develop and implement a quality instructional improvement plan to maximize the performance of each student and identified academic areas. So the objective would be, by September, establish the school districts designated school improvement model as the foundation for the school improvement efforts across the grade and subject levels. By this time, or by this school year, offer programs that maximize every student's ability and interest. Okay? So these are the objectives that you're gonna shoot for, but it doesn't tell staff how to do. And then, one more example, to continue to deliver high-quality education. Here is, by this timeframe, increase the number of learning opportunities. By this timeframe, outperform regional comparable districts. By this time, increase partnerships. Alright, so those are the things that, that you would do as far as that goal. So when we're looking at facilities, under that focus area, what can be a goal there? You know, that we're, you know, we had numerous things that were talked about in facilities. Uh, whether it's safety or security, whether it's just new furniture, whether it's the building as a whole. What is your goal? And then, what are some of the things that we can do in order to get there? What are some timelines? Same would be with leadership. I'm working backwards up the list now. Uh, but leadership, you have, you know, things that came up were roles and responsibilities. And just, uh, communication between all the stakeholders. And knowing what everybody's jobs are, so what is your goal there under leadership? Is there gonna be more training that takes place? Is there gonna be some meetings that happen? You know, whatever the case is, you know, if your goal is to improve the understanding of roles and responsibilities between all this leadership, uh, which would include head of unions, head of the administration, community, uh, organizations and the school board. Uh, you know, what are some, what are some of your goals? And then, what are some things that we can start identifying doing? Alright, and we're writing objectives. What steps must be taken? Write an objective and begin with a statement, the statement with an action verb. And write the objective on a worksheet, and we will then put these on a link for you to look at tomorrow. And I want you to, you're gonna vote on some of these things, so that we're all done with them by Friday. I want you to have to vote on them by Friday night, so I can work on them over the weekend. How does that sound? So, if you wanna move into your groups, and take a look at what, you know, Jennifer and Erin have provided you as a starting points. You know, start breaking that out into those now four focus areas. Not just, uh, not the different, all the different options we had before, but those four. And start looking at goals and potential objectives for each of those four. And we don't want five goals for each focus area, we want one or two. Okay, one or two. Alright, so let's take a break, and you know, if you need to get up and stretch, and then, Teresa, I don't know how you wanna break up the groups this time. But this is gonna take some time, so I'm suggesting, uh, that we're gonna convene back together at 5:45. How does that sound?
Okay, that'll work. Okay, so group one, I have Dave, Lunning, Chad, Carrie, Ashley, Miranda and Pat. Group two is Teresa, Dev, Dave, Farlinger, Dawn and Trevor. Group three is Tim, Cass, Kyle, Erin, Chrissy and Kate has to take off. Let's go. Oh, that's right. I was too busy trying to make sure I had enough in each group.
Well, we're having a break.
Alright, I go check on the basketball kids anyways.
Okay, here it goes.
Tim will slide around, we'll just pile in, we're good. You used to sit down here. Alright, we're good to go.
Okay, alright, so let's, let's just kinda go around the room a little bit and, and talk about each of the focus areas. What kinda things you put together as far as goals are concerned? And then, then we'll talk, we'll go back and talk about the objectives for each, actually, let's do goal and objective right away. So let's, so how many groups did you have, two or three?
Three.
Three.
Alright, so let's go, let's just take turns, and let's start with the first focus area.
We had, our first focus area was the student achievement and support. We had, "We will provide a high-quality learning opportunities that prepares our graduates for college, career and life." And then for the objectives, we had, "By January 30th of each year, um, we will assess the current curriculum and future needs for the edu, and future education needs." And the second one, we're still tinkering with the wording, but it has to do with establishing college partnerships, the PSEO, job study, career fairs, stuff like that, so we had two.
Okay.
Group two?
Next.
Okay, so under student achievement and support, our goal was, students will graduate ready for career and life. And the first objective was to attend college and career fairs throughout grades eight through 12. And then, continue with work-study internship opportunities.
Yes.
How about the other group?
Group three?
Okay, I totally submitted our form, so.
Nice!
We combined, um, the three goals from administration kind of into one, so we will achieve the five goals of the world's best workfor, workforce by providing high-quality learning opportunities. And then we pulled in the objectives from, that everyone probably has, from the administration as our goal. And then we also added an additional one to foster collaboration with, uh, with other, with other neighboring school districts.
Good.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Very good. Let's, uh, take, let's go to the next, any, any, let's just, uh, open for any comments here first. You know, as you heard with the other groups were talking about, any general comments about what the other ones came up with?
I think we're kind of all thinking on the same thing, it's just wording differences, that's it. Otherwise, I think the main, you know, the main points are all the same.
Very good. Alright, let's go on to the next one then.
Um, goal two was the community outreach and communication. We have, "We will increase community outreach and communication via multiple ways by seeking input from internal and external stakeholders." Um, the one we had with is, "By September 1st and January 30th, we will send surveys to parents and community members, um, asking for feedback regarding strengthening communication."
Uh, group two had, um, the first goal here on the sheet, "We will achieve the goals of the world's best workforce." And with that, um, the objective, the first objective was, "By 2023, 2024 school year, establish a world's best workforce, uh, with the advisory committee per state statute and, um, take that feedback." And then that was objective two. We would like that advisory committee to meet and work on the world's best workforce stuff, and then have a bi-annual report to the school board. Yep.
Group three?
We noted, uh, as our goal for community, to increase community engagement and involvement. And underneath that, we had three objectives, um, I, this may not be how we worded it. But, um, one, um, develop community teaching opportunities for, for students, so, um, we discussed like somebody who knows how to change a tire, you know, if they were willing to come in a day and teach during, offer that during a study hall course, class, for example. Um, and then develop a communication strategy with standardized, um, like platforms or, or tools. So, um, right now, there's a lot of different tools that are used depending on, on kind of the preference. So how can you develop like three standard tools that you communicate on those three methods every single time, right? Um, and then, implement two new communication strategies, whether, I think, um, like Southland does, as we were talking, like they have little flyers that they put like at their gas station and grocery store that have like upcoming key events. Um, so that's just one idea, but, but, um, but that's kind of what we have in summary for community engagement.
Thank you. Okay, let's just keep going down the list. Well, you know, the deal is, is we're gonna put all, you know, first of all, do we have any comments on the differences that, between the three groups of what you heard from each other?
I think the items could prob, like, we can all, we could probably have a overreaching, arching goal that involves all of the objectives that were discussed.
Alright, let's go on to the next one then.
Okay, picking rebound handwriting. "We will foster," oh crap. It's all chicken scratch, we did it too. "We will foster respect and a positive..." Oh crap, skip, I gotta try to read my own writing, I wrote too fast.
Foster respect and positive relationships within our school and the community.
Yeah, I made a note here, there it is.
It's off of one of the goals.
We took the objective number three, under goal number three from the staff, and actually made that the goal itself. We were still trying to figure out the wording on this, but one of the things we were trying to figure out, how to do the right wording is, because we don't, it's the chain of command. And how, you know, to get that out to parents of how you need to go if you have issues, and to make sure that the school has follow-up. We were still going back and forth really on the wording, so we're not quite there yet, but those were the two things that we really wanted to hit for the objective. That's all we had.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so our first goal for leadership was to communicate effectively with stakeholders. The first objective underneath that, we had weekly announcements from student leadership via social media, whether it's YouTube, uh, Facebook, um, whatever. And then the other objective was maybe a weekly email of current happenings to all the families.
Um, we pulled over, um, from our, our administrative partners. Their goal was to provide a quality educational experience. Um, we modified this a little, well, effectively leading staff and managing district resources. We did pull over with that, the, um, adhere to a district fund balance policy, develop a five-year financial plan. And we, we discussed how to define, uh, this, I don't know if I put this in there, but how to define the, like, the leadership structure, your leadership lanes, right? Like, what's the purpose of the board, what's the purpose of your, that I think, unless you work in leadership, you kinda don't know, right, right?
Okay. Alright, any comments on that amongst, from what you heard from other people? Oh, you're quiet now.
Well, we're good. We're all just so happy.
Yes. Alright, let's do the last one.
Alright, for facilities, we have, "We will maintain a safe, secure and functional facility for students, staff and the community." And the objective we have was to continue to utilize and prioritize the LTFM capital project spreadsheet. We love that conversation.
So for our facilities, the first goal was to continue to update and refresh buildings and grounds. Uh, one objective was to research possible employment opportunities for summer employment by April 2023. What we meant by that was not everybody works 12 months out of the year, so if, if we had some miscellaneous tasks, could we employ some of those people that had the summer off, so to say? And help out with some of the miscellaneous tasks. And then the other objective was, uh, possible custodial report during monthly board meetings of things that are gonna happen, or are happening, or needs, wants, just basic.
Group number three?
Um, ma, maintain facilities to enhance learning, uh, tie, objectives, timely response to maintenance needs. Um, annual inspections with action plans, like how those inspections are gonna be addressed. Yeah, that was about it.
So, any comments on those from the other groups that you have? Alright, very good. So what I need, you know, so group three is overachieved, and they've already got their stuff input. Thank you very much, group three. And so groups one and two, I need you to get that done tonight, if you could, so that I can quickly put together a survey for you. Uh, first thing tomorrow morning, please, so that I can put a survey together for you guys to actually vote on some of these items, okay, and rank them. So that's, that's what the goal is. I sent you in an email before the meeting, the link, I believe, to that, uh, which link did I send you?
Yeah, you sent it to everybody.
Okay, alright. So just, uh, get your stuff in there, and then, uh, then I could take that information and summarize it. I'm, I'm, now I'm drawing a blank, if I'm actually gonna send it out for a vote or not, I don't think I'm going to. I think what we're gonna end up doing is summarizing all that data, and then having, um, I'm gonna have it all ready for the plan on the page, alright? So based on what you guys have been putting together. Okay, thanks for that work. Uh, one last thing. I'm gonna, I got some new, other things to go through here tonight. Uh, first, for those of you that are currently on the school board, uh, when you get home tonight, you'll have an email from me asking you to do a board self-evaluation. And I'm gonna have you, uh, that link, I want you to do that and get started on that, and I need to have that also done before the end of the week. And so, take a look at that, it should take about 20 minutes, 20 to 25 minutes. You know, unless you're, Teresa gets all screwed up, you know, and hits the wrong buttons, well, that's. Yeah, 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 alright. And so, get that done, so let me share my screen, we got a few thing, other things to cover. Okay, so we've talked about this in the past. We're, just a reminder, we're gonna, when we bring this to the board, it's all gonna be about the board adopting the plan, the strategic plan up on top, and then passing it over the picket fence to the administration to implement it. That's when the action plans get put in play, and then we monitor against that. Okay? And we've covered that, so the next step is, you're gonna get a draft plan on the page next week. And right now, we got a meeting scheduled for the 21st, what time is that one gonna be at, guys? And that's just a board meeting, but the rest of you can attend.
Let's make it a six o'clock. Let's make it a six o'clock.
Okay, and I'm going to like come down in person unless everything goes sideways, okay? So we will have this plan on the page and we're going to have you look at. It'll, and the thing, and this is basically what it looks like, it's gonna have this at the top where we have our belief statements. Our mission statement, our vision statement. And then it's gonna have our focus areas, as a goal or two on each one, and what the objectives are. So we'll have you guys look through that next week, if we have to make some more changes, we will, and then you can adopt it.
You have it as Wednesday, the 21st at six o'clock for this, right?
Yep.
Okay. Our board meeting's on the 20th.
Unless you wanna switch it to the 20th, it's up to you.
Let me pull up the agenda and see what we got.
Can I ask why the rest of us wouldn't wanna be there on the Wednesday night one? I mean, we're going through it, the rest of us want to be there. For a part of, of doing this, would be the finalization. I don't know, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm kind of confused, I don't know.
Yeah, the reason that it's not the committee in, in a whole, as a whole, is because this really gets to be the, this is. Your recommendation to the board, and so now it's time for the board to take action, is what it boils down to. The committee itself has already spoken, coming with all this information. You guys have already defined the vision, the mission, the belief statements, you've come with your first crack at the goals and objectives. And now it's time for the board to do what they're responsible to do and, and get it approved and start, start the process. Did that answer your question?
Yep, thank you. Okay, so board members, I also wanted to say, the two new members of the board should be there with us, right?
Yes, they can't vote, but they, they definitely should be, you know, there, you know, hearing what's said, absolutely.
Sorry, that's what I'm gonna bring up now, so current, oh, so hold on, guys, so current board members, what we have set for Tuesday is we have a 6:01 meeting for truth and taxation. We cannot do that any sooner, which means we cannot start till 6:01, so we cannot move it up. When that is done, we then call to order the regular meeting, we go through the audit, student reports, the consent agenda. There is no policy meeting this month, we will approve Aaron's master contract, we will do discussion and prove superintendent goals, and that's all we have. So do we wanna move it to Tuesday, or do we wanna keep it as Wednesday? Between, yeah, we have, like I said, the audit and the truth and taxation, I mean, the truth and taxation is gonna take at least 35 to 40 minutes just to get through that alone.
Personally, I think it'd be better to just have a meeting focused on.
Just this? Okay, so Gary, yep, let's stick with Wednesday, the 21st at six o'clock for this, just come if you can.
Sounds good, that sounds real good. Okay, and so as we go forward, the next thing is going to be that we're gonna monitor the strategic plan. We're gonna have to have it on your calendar, we need to have it in staff meetings, we need to have it in admin meetings, we need to be talking about it with the community. The last thing we need is this in a three ring binder sitting up on the shelf someplace. This has gotta be used, alright? And if it's not used, then this was just a big waste of time. Alright, so let's go on to the next thing, I'm going to ask you this now. As you reflect on the strategic planning process and your participation. Share some comments, what you appreciated, uh, some questions, or any other reflections that you have regarding this process. I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see everybody's faces.
I'll start, the one thing I appreciated the most is the fact that the community has a say. And that they were involved in this, it wasn't just the board, it wasn't just the administration, it was the community as well to be a part of this.
And in addition, staff.
And staff, yes.
So I like having all the different, you know, the community, the staff, the board, the administration, all of us working together, that was.
I know, Gary, you said, you know, we were going to run them slides with the external stuff and, and you had said some people sitting around the table might not. Like to hear some of the stuff, but I, I did, good or bad, it was good to at least hear it, confront it, let's deal with it, and, and get better.
I like how we have measurable guidelines for everyone to go by, so then they're clear cut, there's no saying, you know. What we can and can't accomplish as a district, they're there, and I think that we can be held accountable to those actions. You know, and we can hold, hold each other accountable to those actions as well, that's what I appreciated the most.
So as this progresses, like, who monitors that for, say, like, if, if it's happening or not?
So what do you guys think? Who, who's getting monitored this?
Well, I think it's, it's everybody as a whole, making sure that we're sticking to the.
Who, you know, is talking that chain of command again, so does it take. A parent calling the office, does it, you know, does it take somebody that's in this room right now? Who's the go-to, what does that look like?
Well, I think for your strategic plan, that your administration, the school is responsible for outsourcing and putting into action that administrative. That, or our strategic plan, this is technically a strategic plan with initiatives. They should report back to the board, whether it be quarterly or however often that the board sees necessary. And that the, in terms of a strategic plan, I think the teachers, the staff, and community, there should be, I know, does that work? We do quarterly updates, right, with where, hey, we're on target to hit this, this initiative. Hey, we hit compliance with this CMS metric, right? So sharing some of that out and finding a communication method to do so, which is one of those strategies.
So something that's added on to the board agenda quarterly then, or?
Well, I, yeah, that'd be my vision, that, and the board could determine that frequency of how, how often. You know, we wanna have, have updates, and you might hit a goal, right, you might hit one of your obje- objectives and obtain it. And you might be able to say that by in 2023, every single one of our graduate, our, our senior class graduated, right? That's a metric, it's measurable, it's reportable, that can be shared, right?
We also have a policy that we are revisiting, we need to spend more time on that policy. And that's about world's best workforce, which is directly then related back to the strategic planning. And on that, yearly, there is, there's, they encourage to have input from community members and staff. And that, and that's, that's a policy that we as a board are really looking into and seeing, are we doing that as a school? So another opportunity to continue having community input.
And that's where that stat comes in place with the advisory committee.
Yeah, I've got it right here, that each school shall establish an advisory committee. Advisory committee, you know, shall reflect the diversity of the district, it's supposed to be teachers, parents, support staff, students, community residents. They're all supposed to be, they're all supposed to come together, world's best workforce, we're supposed to be sending out surveys. We haven't done that, we're supposed to be opening, you know, having public, public meetings for parents to come in, we haven't done that either. So there's a lot of things under world's best workforce, even like the site team, our site team is supposed to have at least one parent, we don't even have that. So that's where that policy will come into play, and yes, the strategic plan will then help world's best workforce, so that is a good place to start with.
So hopefully we'll be having continuation with that as well.
Good, good discussion, guys, and so instead of me just telling you what to do, that's exactly what I would have said, are all those items, and.
And Gary, if we're starting, things get busy and you get, you get focused on different things, and if, if somebody's got that question, I mean, a board member could add it to the agenda just for a simple discussion item.
Absolutely.
Bring everybody back in there, so.
I think, I think a good practice would be is just to put that on at least once a quarter, an update on the strategic plan. You know, just put that as part of your agenda, and so it's, it's a placeholder, and, and you'll get.
Fall back on just administration, like entirely on if this comes to a halt, you know, there has to be. Support for them as well, and I think that checkback would be any halts that they're running into or anything that's kind of falling off the. Cause I kind of feel like, now it's like, okay, Jen and Aaron, now you guys go do all this, and that's not really fair, because in the beginning, we said. It takes parents, community members, board members, you know, everybody unitedly pushing forward, so.
Yep. And so, and that's part of it, is part of it, when we finally approve this and all the action plan stuff gets put on it. Then, remember we were talking about things having SMART goals, well, it's gotta be achievable. We just don't wanna say, you know, set up administration to fail, knowing that there's just no way they're gonna get all this work done. And so, we have to grab what's achievable, and that's where we have input back from Jen and Aaron. What of these things can we actually do? And it's, and it's also a part of their evaluations, it's all part of, it's all connected, the whole thing should be connected, so. You know, what we do just in MSBA, and now we're going through a new iteration of it now, we do our own strategic planning. And so that's, usually the reporting falls on me, being I'm the deputy executive director, so I have to create the reporting to our board of directors. Of 15 different board members, showing that we're making progress on, on what we're doing. And, and so those generally go back to the action plans, and I mark off the ones, and these are the goals that we're addressing. And when things start going sideways like they did during COVID, then that's when I report. You know, we can't work on this stuff now because all the stuff, other stuff happened, so. Okay, anything else that you guys appreciated or wanna bring comments on, or didn't like? Other than, you know, you got some dude from Fertile, Minnesota trying to lead you through this.
Your words, not ours.
Exactly, I can always fall back on that, that's always an excuse. No, I missed that one, it sounded funny.
Our, our head football coach said he doesn't have a beef with Fertile, Gary.
Yeah, that's really good, that's good. Yeah, your, in your, your region took, your section took it to us again this year, Spring Grove got us good, so. Yeah, I just can't put up with you southern boys, you know, can't deal with you. One last unrelated comment. My wife was gone today and she came home with one of my favorite treats, so if you're ever at Menards. You know, so as I was sitting here munching on it when you guys were talking, at Menards, you can buy Cheetos that are. Grilled cheese and tomato soup flavored. It is the craziest thing you've ever had, you either love them or you hate them, so I happen to love them, so anyway. Completely off the subject. Alright, I think as far as that is concerned, guys, thanks for your time. I really appreciate it, spending this time with you, I really look forward to this. And I'm glad that you as a group, as stakeholders, and as a community, got a chance to sit down and just visit. And try and get on the same page, this is a good deal, a real good deal. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Gary.
You bet.
Yes, I have to adjourn. Alright, board members, I would look for a motion and a second to adjourn. I got a motion by Cass, I got a second by Dave, any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, adjourn at 6:40 PM.